Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Seneca County Regular Board Meeting for Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. Get a roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds. Supervisor Trout. Supervisor Brownell. Supervisor Barnhart.
Here.
Supervisor Borst. Supervisor Hayes. Supervisor Ferrara. Supervisor Cronemutter. Supervisor Reinhardt. Supervisor Partee. Supervisor Heisen. Supervisor Don Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Enzlo.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley. You have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please join me for a Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first up, we have a public hearing on Seneca County Local Law Number Six. You get a motion.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Motion. Can I get a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public hearing is now open. If anybody has anything on this, they can come forward to the podium.
Motion to close the public hearing.
First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Okay, so we have some presentations tonight. We have, first up is the Brightest Star Award. Supervisor Borst.
The Brightest Star Award recognizes up to four sixth-grade students who consistently work to his or her academic ability, are involved in their school or community, and are responsible, respectful, and compassionate. We are pleased to announce Macy Wilkins, Emily Williamson, Nathaniel Taylor, and Derek Martin as the 2023 recipients. Can we have Macy come up and her parents? Macy's the daughter of Ms. Jessica Beeching and Mr. Cale Wilkins of Fayette. Macy was nominated by her teachers at Romulus. Macy is the top of her class with the highest overall average. She works extremely hard, always has her work completed on time, and asks great questions to make sure she understands her assignments. Macy participates in student council, is the treasurer, and helps run the student store. She is super respectful with students that shop at the student store, helps them count money and shop. Macy is one of those students you can count on for anything: to be a friend to someone that's having a hard day, to helping someone finishing up work when they don't want to work with anyone else. She is a bright spot in every adult's day and continues, and saying hello to them. Congratulations, Macy. Emily, could you please come up and her parents? Emily is the daughter of Ms. Kelsey DeClue Rapley of Interlaken and Mr. Jamie Williamson of Trimmansburg. Emily is a resident of the town of Covert and was nominated by her sixth-grade teachers at South Seneca Middle School. Emily is very conscientious about her schoolwork. She maintains high honor roll, plays the trumpet, and participates in chorus. Emily is a member of student council, participates in four-down sports where she plays basketball. Emily also sings the National Anthem at sporting events and volunteers at the concession stand. Emily is always interested in bettering herself and helping those around her see their potential. She puts forth a lot of effort in doing what is right. Congratulations, Emily. And Nathaniel is at camp, but could I have his parents come up? Nathaniel is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Paul Taylor of Seneca Falls. Nathaniel is unable to join us this evening as he is away at camp. Nathaniel was nominated by his teacher and pastor at Seneca Bible Baptist Academy. Nathaniel is very studious about his schoolwork and has high grades in all of his studies. He helps tutor some of his classmates when needed. Nathaniel is very active in his church, youth group, and participates in community events. Nathaniel helped at last year's county fair and plans to do so again this year. He has participated in Sunday church services at Seneca Nursing Home. Nathaniel has a heart for people. If he sees someone looking lonely, he goes and befriends them, making them feel part of the group. If he sees someone getting bullied, he goes and sticks up for that person. That's just how Nathaniel is. Congratulations, Nathaniel. Could I have Derek and his parents come up? Derek is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Joshua Martin of Seneca Falls. Derek was nominated by his sixth-grade teachers at Seneca Falls Middle School. Derek is a hard-working student. He takes advanced math and is slated to take advanced science next year. Derek is very responsible, comes to class prepared, and completes his work on time. He participates in chorus and intramural sports activities at school. Derek is an active member of the Finger Lakes Christian Fellowship Church, as well as volunteers with the Seneca Falls Community Little League. Derek's teachers appreciate his outgoing personality and his willingness to engage in positive interactions with all kinds of people, from adults to his peers to kids outside his age group. He is passionate about everything he does. Congratulations, Derek.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a presentation from the Interlaken Fire Department. Come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Matt Barky. I'm the president of the fire department down there in Interlaken, and I was called to come up and maybe answer questions or anything you might want to know regarding we put in for a tourism grant to help out with some costs for our annual car show that we do in August every year. So if there's any questions regarding that application, here I am, I guess, or what do you need to know? I'm not sure who called me on the phone.
I'm not sure either.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll go over it.
That'd be great.
I was called and asked to come up here to just kind of maybe go over particulars, I guess, that, do you guys have the applications in front of you? Okay. If you had a chance to look at those or not, if there's any questions, let me know, but we do a car show down there to, it's a benefit for our fire department, obviously. We've been doing it for 38 years. I personally have been in charge of it with a couple other people for about the past 20 and didn't realize until talking with one of the local town supervisors that it is kind of a big tourism event. We, you know, haven't really, we're kind of, not blinders on, but we just, we're so used to doing it, but we are drawing a lot of people from outside the area. You name the surrounding counties that are coming, we're drawing people out of Pennsylvania. We get some from Canada once in a while. It is just a one-day event. I just sent out, we sent out, I just sent out exactly 300 mailers yesterday. That go out to all participants, past participants and potential people that have interest in it. So, and it, cost-wise for us to put that on, you know, we're just a small department down there, it's, this year's estimated cost is going to be right around $5,000. Last year was over $4,000. So we're bringing in the income, you know, we're making maybe a grand or two on it to help us out with some equipment costs that we can't, you know, otherwise make on our own, but that's kind of the show in a nutshell. So is there any questions for me or anything I can maybe expand on within that application?
How many cars do you draw?
We're drawing anywhere between, on the low end, 100. We've had as many as 200. We're drawing probably right around 1,000 people between the car participants and people coming through the gates. We, you know, there's other activities that are going on down there, it's just not the car show, but we're putting on a chicken barbecue. We have our, we're selling food and different things like that. We have some other organizations that come in and set up that promote their, their interest as well.
How is the awards done? Is that judges or is that people's choice or how's the?
The, I brought one of, one of the posters. The, I can leave it with you guys when I'm done. We just got these back, just got these done up, but we have, we basically give away, it's a fun show, a fun format, it's not anything really formal. People can kind of just come in and park where they want to. We want people to have fun and have a fun day down there in our end. And we do four trophies, really. It's all to show participants, except for one, that vote on them. They just get, they get a ballot at the beginning of, when they come up to register. And the, we have the fire chiefs, they go around and they pick their favorite, and we do a little trophy ceremony at the end of the day, right around three, four o'clock. So that's how we do it. There's no classes or just, it's a fun, fun event.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
With the grant, I mean, if we were awarded that, we could obviously advertise it more. We're printing up flyers, we're running ads in local papers, we're using social media as we can, but we could definitely expand our advertising to see if we can maybe expand the show a little more. So like I said, we've been doing it 38 years, so it's not anything that's new, but we just didn't really, I guess we don't see it as a tourism thing, but then when you think about it, there's a lot of people that are coming from outside the area to this event that we, you just, you don't think about it, but they are. Anything else I can add or?
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have our business meeting tonight, too, so I got to run, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Revitalize Waterloo Committee.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you guys today. I don't know how I could actually follow the youth of our county and their great accomplishments, but for those who are still around, I guess they've all left, but anyway, our Revitalization of Waterloo Committee is a brand-new committee that's kind of evolved from the old Image Identity in Public Spaces Committee that was formed about 2015, 2016 in Waterloo. And the initial portion of that IIP committee was basically for the public spaces in putting in new parking signs and bike racks and stuff like that. We had James Reynolds from, I think it was Input Architect or something like that, who kind of was heading it, and then in '21, James kind of, I think his, his term was up with the, with the village board, and myself and Josh Mull and Cindy Park Shields, we got together in the October of '21 to talk about how we needed to work on the image and identity of Waterloo, the village of Waterloo. And we have so much potential there with 12,000 to 15,000 cars passing through it and not having people stop because of many vacant downtown stores. So we were looking at putting on programs that will attract people throughout the year besides having Memorial Day weekend in order to show people that Waterloo is a happening town and that we could hopefully start attracting new businesses into town because of these various programs. '22 was kind of a slow year for us. We just, I think we just did a food truck thing, but then I began to network and I was able to get a few more people on the committee, and what I just handed you out today was the, and you could probably see was, we were doing several programs, the Monday Night Food Truck Car Cruise Behind Mojos that's going to run from June 12th to September 11th. We just had a Villagewide Garage Sale. That was, I would say, fairly okay, but again, that wasn't going to be attracting people right now from outside. The next two events are really what's going to start bringing people in. The one that we're going to be doing this Saturday, the Cornhole Tournament that's going to be at Seneca County Fairgrounds. We're going to be attracting people from Rochester through Syracuse, and the donations, whatever we, part of the proceeds is going to go to benefit our Waterloo Fire Department. But our big thing that we're really going to shoot for is for the Zombie 5K Run Walk on October 28th, which is going to be at Lafayette Park. This is going to be the main, our main bread and butter for this year. We are looking to at least attract 500 people. We're going to be advertising throughout all of Seneca County, all the Finger Lakes. We're going to be going around through Rochester, Syracuse, down to Watkins Glen, Ithaca. I'm going to be hitting up all the colleges. The, the main theme of that date would be to come dressed as, in Halloween outfits. We're going to have zombies, there's going to be a photo op by the, oh, the one cemetery in town there with zombies and so forth. We're going to have like red Kool-Aid. The awards are going to be in the shape of tombstones, all right? It's going to be an experience, not just a race. We, we want to make this as big as it's a wonderful run that they have in Seneca Falls during December, and that's what we're aiming for. And so hopefully, we can get, you know, several thousand people. This way, they may not only be staying overnight, but also they will be going through the various, like restaurants in town, going into Seneca Falls, going wherever to have dinner, because it's, the race is going to be at four o'clock, we're going to be finishing at six, and we also going to be piggybacking it with this year's Rotary Pumpkin Walk out on Oak Island. And as you can see, it's going to benefit Beverly's Animal Shelter and Boy Scout Troop 45, some of the proceeds that we're going to have. In the future, what we're looking for is besides these events, we're looking to probably do a Oktoberfest, and then we're going to do some kind of a kids' event over the summertime. Okay? What we need, what we would, what we're asking from you is, for a grant, is to help us to fray our initial first-year cost. As you saw, you could see there's a number of them, you know, that we had to incur, and base, and right now, I've put a lot of money out of my pocket and I need to, you know, we need to help do advertising for this 5K run. Soon as we finish up with the Cornhole Tournament on Saturday, all our efforts are going to go towards this, and then come September, we're going to be planning for our events for '24. Any other, any questions?
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you. Two questions.
Sure.
The revitalization, is that specific to the village of Waterloo or is it for the village and town of Waterloo?
Basically, it's for the village.
And then, secondly, I was looking at the budget, so are you an established 501(c)(3)? Are you in the process of doing it?
Yes. No, we have, we have, we have the, we are.
And the last question, and I'll be done, is this committee, is this made up of how many people and how, can you just, a brief structure of how your committee is set up?
Sure. We, right now, we have about five members. Myself, I'm the chairperson. We have, we had several, we have one person right now that's currently, actually two people, I should say, who are currently our liaison through the village board, Gina Safrandini and Patty Bartrand. We had a, we also have Lee Boyce, who was once also a trustee. We have Corinne Tilton, who is involved in a number of programs. We just added Yvonne Erway, and we're looking to add several other people on the committee over the summer to get ready for next year. Okay? Okay. Anybody else?
I have one question.
Sure.
The structure of donations is baby bear, mom bear, papa bear. No connection with the three bears, though, right?
Goldilocks? No. But.
Does that go with Sam Bear? Is that was, is that what the theme is?
Yes.
On that level?
Yeah, the, yeah, who was the original per, first permanent resident in Waterloo. Okay? Yeah, I think there was a guy by the name of Green or something like that who was, who actually came up from Pennsylvania and operated some grist mills prior to Samuel Bear coming in 1792. All right? Okay. Supervisor Partee? Oh, okay.
If, right now, many of them are asked, are doing it on their own, but there are some who will require at least a minimum of $500. All right? So that's just in case we get somebody like that, like if we have one that's not coming, for example, we need to make, we need to get somebody in advance or last minute, and they're asking for $500, and this way, we have that money to give them.
What else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation from the Chamber of Commerce. Jeff Shipley.
Okay. Good evening, Supervisors, County Manager Rowe, Deputy County Manager, Department Heads, and whoever's left from the public. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Jeff Shipley. I am the President of the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber serves as the Tourism Promotion Agency for Seneca County. I come before you on a quarterly basis to explain how the TPA has been promoting the county and expending occupancy tax funds. I'm usually here next month, so I'm a month early, and the reason I'm a month early is because we're also, I'm also going to tie this into a conversation on the solar eclipse that I was asked to speak by Supervisor Partee. So I'm going to do that at the end. I am very cognizant of your time, but I do only come before you four times a year, so there's, I don't want to shortchange some of the efforts that we've been up to, and we have had some really astounding, really successful accomplishments over the past quarter. So forgive me if I go a little, a little over time. I'll get into this, how do I start? It has been a very down tourism start to 2023. The slide I've got up in front of you is statewide numbers. You can see the chart. The red line is the nation, and the blue line is the state of New York. Across the state, visitor spending is down, has been down in both quarters of 2023. We have not fared as, as bad here in Seneca County as the rest of the state, but statewide, in April and May specifically, year-over-year decline of 15 and a half percent. That is, that is pretty significant. It is certainly a trend that we hope does not continue into the summer. There is very promising indications for the summer. Visitor spending in Seneca County for Quarter One is down as well, but as you saw, we are not to the same amount as the state, the rest of the state. We are down 3% over 2021 level. That's sort of our benchmark level. We're about flat from last year. Retail has seen the biggest decrease in this, in this category. I've got a chart on, on the screen for you down at the bottom. It's probably a little hard to see for most of you. We work with Visa, Visa Credit Card. We are using Visa. We have a great relationship with them. It's part of our research program that we allocate money for in our programming, and so we get really good statistical information from this partnership. Now, this one only goes from Quarter One. I don't have Quarter Two stats right now yet, but you can see where we're trending. We're trending fairly close through the first couple months of the year, and then we're down pretty significantly from 2021, but you saw the rest of the state is as well. Wanted to put this in the perspective a bit for you. There was a briefing that came out at the end of May. It was from the State of the American Traveler, and we are not immune to consumer perceptions and trends. You saw what the state is. This is across the nation. More consumers said they are worse off financially right now compared to 2022. More consumers said now is a bad time to spend money on leisure travel. Almost 60% expect the U.S. to enter an economic recession over the next six months, and nearly 63% report being cautious with their money because of the recessionary concerns. Almost half report that prices have kept them from traveling in the past month, and almost 33% report canceling an upcoming trip due to inflation. I can tell you that all of this holds in Seneca County, our tourism, our last tourism committee, which you are all invited to, by the way. Anytime you would like to join us, we meet every month. It's the last Thursday of the month, and we can certainly get you added onto the email list if you're not receiving that. But we have a sort of a roundtable in our tourism committee. It's made up of lodging sector, it's made up of historic sector, museum sectors, so on and so forth, and we are hearing this from our lodging members, that they have noticed an uptick in cancellations and particularly cancellations at the last minute. So that is what we are seeing. I'm going to take you dive, a little deeper dive into some of the numbers. These are all numbers specific to Seneca County. This is, again, part of our research project, our research program. The numbers come from a company called Domo and Rove. This is the percent of travelers that stay overnight in Seneca County, and this is for 2023. This is updated as of June. The good news is 60%, nearly 60%, of all travelers to Seneca County stay overnight. The good news is 60%, nearly 60% of all travelers to Seneca County stay overnight. That is down, though, a little bit from what the region experiences. The region experience is 68%. No surprise, what you see on the screen, the line chart measures in-state, these are other parts of New York State, domestic visitors, other parts of the United States, and international. So it's no surprise that the international line, the top one, the, the goldish line, international counts for most, a higher trend of overnight stays. But 60% is definitely a solid number. Our occupancy tax, or our occupancy rate, right? The occupancy tax is based on the occupancy rate. So I put a snapshot for you of short-term rentals. Short-term rentals are very important to the occupancy tax, as we have all seen over the last couple of years. Again, this, this data comes from our Rove study, but this one comes from a company called Air DNA. So currently, where we sit, the average occupancy rate for short-term rentals is 42%. You can see, hopefully, the bar chart. We only go, by the way, we only go through May in, in these numbers. But short-term rentals are certainly an important part of our occupancy tax, our, our occupancy rate. They are traveling, they are trending behind where we were in 2021. I told you 2021 was that benchmark, so we're down about 6% off of those numbers in 2021. I will say, May 2023, which is the last month we have for data, that was the closest month that we've been to 2021 since January. So the numbers are starting to come in the right direction now as we enter the, which is not unsurprising, right? We're gonna see people, the, the highest months traveled here in Seneca County is July and August, so it's not unsurprising, but we still are off the pace from the last two years. This is the average length of stay. This is a number that's very important to us at the Tourism Promotion Agency, because the longer people stay, the longer they spend money, the longer, the, the healthier economy here in Seneca County grows. The average length of stay to this point in 2023 is 2.3 days. We're, again, off of what the region holds at 2.9, but I would say we're, we're holding our own at 2.3. It is an increase, so here is some bright news for you. Not a whopping increase, 0.2%, but it is an increase, and we will take it. Another one that's very important to us in our targeting efforts is repeat visitors. We have, through this point in 2023, are seeing 23.6% repeat visitors. This number is a disappointment. There's no other way to say this. The year-to-date average rate of repeat visitors is 23%. We want that to be much higher. That is what we have pivoted to some extent, to the extent that we can with our budgets. We do have budgets that have already been submitted and, and put in place, but to the extent that we can react to these numbers, we are. The region, you can see, we trail the region by almost 20 percentage points. The region's at 40%. The biggest difference of why our repeat visitation is down is from New York State visitors. So what you are gonna see in some of the other slides is we have pivoted to some extent. We are targeting more Syracuse, Rochester, Buffalo, Albany, Binghamton. We are trying to target advertising in other parts of New York State, particularly those parts of New York State that would stay overnight. We did see an increase, January to June over 2022, which is the good news, 16.4%. But still, these numbers need to improve. We would like to see these numbers improve. So I threw a lot of stats at you, but it, it, it is what we use to base our marketing strategy on. And so I'm gonna walk you through this really quick. What we are targeting, the message that we are targeting, the, the consumers, I should say, that we are targeting, we're trying to position Seneca County lodging as that ideal place to stay overnight. The way tourism pro, the tourism program is funded in this county, like other counties, is through occupancy tax. So if we can't get people to stay overnight, we are not gonna have occupancy tax dollars to re-grant, to do many of the programs that we are doing this year, and certainly in the future, that is, is something that we want to focus on. Does it improve overnight stays? That's what goes into the, to the pool of tourism resources. We wanna focus on repeat visitors. I showed you the numbers, how they are down in repeat visitation. We are trying our best to raise those. And finally, this is sort of how we have pivoted. We are focusing on in-state visitation, Buffalo to Albany, three-hour radius, thereabouts. Our messaging has, for the last year and a half or so, focused on this message of unhurried adventure, right? We want, we want people to slow down. This is a place that is more relaxed, especially those coming from the metros and the bigger cities. This is a great area to unwind, relax, unwind, get outdoors. Talk a little bit more about that in a little bit, but all of you have our new visitor guide that's on your desk, and you can see that a big theme of that is getting outdoors. That's what we are trying to drive the message home. We also wanna highlight our diverse lodging opportunities. I will tell you that not everyone probably has the same, there are, there are mixed messages about short-term rentals, and I know all of you have concerns that relate to your town and some of the ordinances and that sort of thing. But I will tell you, short-term rentals in Seneca County is a major point of unique competitive advantage. We have so much lake frontage in this community, that is our, our competitive advantage when it comes to a lodging market. We have great hotels, we have great bed and breakfasts, we even have a bed and brunch, but those short-term rentals are really important to our mix. And getting back to one of those earlier studies, those earlier slides that talked about some of the concerns that consumers have, right? It's, 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 we're fighting this perception, and to the extent it's a perception, but we're fighting this, you know, this is not a good time to travel, because we're so uncertain about our economics, our economic immediate future. So we are trying to raise awareness for free and low-cost travel opportunities here in Seneca County. That's what we're trying to get people engaged and, and really raise our exposure and, and have us come higher, maybe higher up on their, on their rankings if they see low-cost opportunities. So our approach, I said we are prioritizing New York State markets to focus on that repeat visitation, that in-state visitation. We are increasing paid social media ad to do that, particularly with a look-alike audience. Look-alikes are basically, we target an audience, right? We target a, a, a profile, demographic profile, and the social media companies give you what's called a look-alike. So somebody that looks like them. You didn't necessarily pick them out, but they, based on the, the criteria, they look like the target audience that you selected. We have a lot of experience, or we had a lot of great success with the look-alike audience today in our, our marketing efforts. And then finally, we wanna improve our SEO, search engine optimization. When people type in a search in Google, we want those, those results coming up with Seneca County travel opportunities. So that's, that's our marketing strategy that we've been following. Now, what we are doing, we are in paid social, social media, this is, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, I could, there's others. Paid search ads, this is primarily the Google search engine, and banner advertisements. So when you're surfing your computer at home and up pops an ad for Discover Seneca, this is what we want, we wanna be where you're looking. So we bid on those types of ads. It costs money. So I synthesized really our second quarter for you, starting with some more bad news, and that is, the cost of Google has skyrocketed in 2023. I gave you the first bullet, shows you an example of this. In May of 2022, our average cost per click on a Google paid search ad was 44 cents. In May of 2023, that has nearly doubled. We are now at 80 cents, and this number is continuing to rise. That means it is putting more strain on our resources, on our budget. We have to very much optimize the keywords, the bids that we are placing. So this has been a very challenging thing to experience. But the ones that we have been successful on, the top-performing campaigns that we've had to date through 2023 have been on the Canadian Finger Lakes Holiday. We are really happy that that Canadian market has opened again, and we have seen a, a, a lot of, a lot of our friends to the north. Also, Seneca Lake Things to Do is, those are the two top-performing campaigns for us. Our paid search, nearly 21,000 impressions, 4,300 engagements, people that saw our ad, people that responded to our ad, reacted to our ad, and 2,100 clicks, website visits. DiscoverSeneca.com, that's our tourism website. That's the website for Seneca County to promote tourism. It has been on a skyrocketing upward trend over the last couple of years, partly because of our digital advertising efforts. We had 100 and close to 20,000 visitors to that website last year. It was our highest ever. At the end of May, we are, we already hit the 50% mark, so we are on track to even blow past 2022, which is pretty amazing. Our top user cities from these digital ads are New York City, Buffalo, Albany, Syracuse, Rochester. That should be no surprise, because that's where we are focusing some money, because we wanna increase the in-state visitation. And then the campaign to date, we have served over 100, 111,000 impressions. Our average cost per click for paid search unfortunately is high. It is 80 cents, but for paid social is 27 cents. So that's well within our target range on that end. And our goal for lead generation, lead generation is when we send out an ad or we send out, we put an ad up and you click on it, we ask, do you wanna subscribe to the Seneca County Tourism Newsletter? And it's actually a double and sometimes a triple opt-in. So these are people that wanna hear news about tourism in Seneca County, right? They are as good of an audience as you could possibly get. Right now, we send out a newsletter, a digital newsletter to this group twice a month. We have about 15,000 subscribers in it. They are constantly refreshed, so we're looking to double that this year. Video. Video rules the digital advertising universe, and we do not have great assets in Seneca County. Digital costs money. Video costs money, I should say. So we have tried to be as judicious as we could and put as much budget as we could to acquiring more video assets. Last year, at the end of the year, we featured several properties. I'm gonna play one of those real quick for you, and we have another video shoot, we have two video shoots, actually. One is at the end of July. We've got three days of filming with a company called Yellow House Media, and we are gonna do another three days of shooting in the fall. And the great thing about this video program is that not only do we have great advertising, compelling video advertising to showcase Seneca County and our tourism assets, but we also give these resources right to those companies, right to those businesses that we filmed at. So this one is what we did, an example of what we did at the end of last year in Interlaken at DNK Ranch. I'm gonna hope this plays. Well, we don't have sound, Mr. County IT guy, but this one, we don't really need sound. Okay, I'll skip through that a little bit, because you all saw that last year. But the reason why it was sort of that dimension is because this was formatted for social media, but we have, we have wide version as well, right? So these are great resources. We equipped DNK Ranch, we equipped Thirsty Owl Wine Company, and we equipped Water to Wine Tours with the video footage that we have, and I know Kelly from DNK loved it. She used it everywhere. So these are the types of resources that we're able to expend county monies, making this, county occupancy tax funds, making these ads for us, but we're also able to equip our businesses with the footage that they can use on their own promotional efforts. One ad that we did in May that was very well-received was for Memorial Day. So this is an example of what we can do with that video once we have it. This Memorial Day ad went, went to primarily a New York State audience. It was basically Buffalo to Albany.
Summer starts here in Waterloo, New York, the birthplace of Memorial Day. Join us at the annual Celebrate, Commemorate Memorial Day Celebration, featuring historic reenactments, a parade, horse and wagon rides, live music, food, fireworks, boat tours, local vendors, and much more. Commemorate the holiday where it all began. It all happens May 26 through the 30th. Visit DiscoverSeneca.com.
So that's an example of our digital advertising program. Some of our new creatives for 2023, you have on your desks the biggest, probably. This is a print version, but we also have a digital version that lives on DiscoverSeneca.com. The one thing I will point out in that book is we focused on outdoors. How do we get the message across that we want you to come to Seneca County and experience the outdoors like nobody else can deliver? We have the two biggest finger lakes in the region. I can go on and on, right? So throughout that guide, there are ways that we have pointed out, and they're kind of off the beaten path a little bit, in those sort of magnifying glasses, are our way of showing people how to get outdoors in this community, right? We have a wealth of outdoor ways to do that. The other two things that we've done in this, in this guide that I can appreciate, you probably don't right now, but you should once you relook at this now, the images, the pictures throughout that guide are all new. We have got some amazing photography, some captivating images that is sprinkled throughout the pages of that guide, and that costs money, too. But we are really, really excited about the imagery that is showcased for Seneca County in there. And the other thing is itineraries. We focused on itineraries. How do we take the guesswork out? How do we make it less hard for people to figure out how to put together a great stay here in Seneca County? So we did packaged itineraries. You don't have to think. All you do is just read, and we have got it laid all out for you to experience a really incredible stay in Seneca County. On the left is our mobile app that was launched this year. It's using the Wish Trip app platform. This is so cool. You know, you drive down the road, and every property in our community is geofenced. So if you have this app open, you drive down the road, and you're going near this, one of these properties, up pops images, up pops descriptions, you name it. It's a really, really cool app. So look for it on Wish Trip. We have events, and I wanted to not shortchange these either. Today, you're not reading that wrong, today is the Cycle the Erie event. There's over 750 cyclists and volunteers in our community right now. We are hosting them, my, my staff is hosting them at People's Park in Seneca Falls. We're doing a wine and cheese reception. We got cupcakes for them. It's their 25th anniversary. It's a really big deal. It's a great group. They've been coming here for a number of years, and we are just so appreciative of their support and, and their commitment to our area. We will continue to make sure they have a great time while they're here. We also had a lot of response from the local community. All the museums along Falls Street in Seneca Falls are staying open late tonight. Parker's has opened tonight. They are not usually open on Tuesdays, but for this, we got them to do so. So it's just a great event. The one I wanna make sure I... The one I want to make sure I, I show you is this Keighoga Lake fishing event. We brought in the Hobie Eyewear Bass Open Series. It's a kayak fishing tournament. It was in the community June twentieth through the twenty-fifth. They fished up and down Keighoga Lake, not just Seneca, they were all the way at the south end, but primarily Seneca. And anyone that went through the town of Seneca Falls during this time, you had to have noticed all of the cars and the trucks pulling kayaks with some really amazing fishing gear attached to it. This, we, we did a survey, and the information is still coming in. There were over a hundred and fourteen anglers from this event that came. Their sponsors came, their families came, they were in our community, they fished the lake from Tuesday on as practice rounds. It was an incredible sight. The average expenditure from our survey so far shows the average angler spent just, just south of seven hundred and fifty dollars while they were here in this community. They stayed here, they ate here, they enjoyed some of our recreation. This little short video clip is from their press conference after the event. And so I just really wanted to play this for you, because I want you to see the application of what fishing in our community brings, and, you know, what a group like this, and where they bring their, their fishermen from.
And we just wrapped up the Hobie Eyewear Keighoga Lake Event here in Seneca County, New York. This is our third and best visit to this northeast region, the best numbers for an event, and the best showing of quality fish. We couldn't have done it without some folks, and we want to thank them now. Thanks to Seneca County Chamber of Commerce for their support to bring us to this area and fish one of the amazing Finger Lakes, Lake Keighoga. This event wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for their support. Thanks to Quality Inn Seneca Falls for offering us such great hospitality all week. The story of this week for many was that prefishing was a little challenging, but that ended early Saturday when the fish hit the leaderboard hot and heavy. We were able to dodge most of the pop-up showers that were in and around the area this weekend, and all in all, it was a spectacular weekend on the water here in the Finger Lakes region. Our anglers were able to showcase that this lake, this time of year, can put up average limits that many other lakes would only dream about. A place where an eighteen-inch average doesn't even cash a check when we pay out seventeen anglers. We thought we were going to see giant smallmouth and in big numbers, but the largemouth decided it was their time to shine and controlled the narrative for the weekend outside of a few big old brownfish that came to play here and there. We had almost thirteen hundred fish submitted to the Turnex leaderboard over the weekend. We saw some really nice smallmouth. They were more built tall and wide than long, like a lot of the largemouth as well. But ultimately, it was the largemouth that showed out into the biggest fish of the event, and that was a twenty and three-quarter inch largemouth caught by Nicky Izell. Nicky, where are you from?
Lewisville, North Carolina.
All right. We got seventeen anglers getting paid right around twenty-four thousand dollars. Let's start diving into our top seventeen. And tell everybody where you're from.
Meriden, Connecticut.
All right. Jody's from West Virginia, Virginia area.
Maryville, Tennessee.
All right, man, Tennessee.
Where are you from?
I'm from Ontario, Canada.
Where are you from?
From Wielusin, Pennsylvania.
Detroit, Michigan.
I'm from Corning, New York.
I'm from Hanover, Pennsylvania.
I'm from Charlottesville, Virginia.
I'm from West Winfield, New York.
From East Adam, Connecticut.
I'm from Andover, Connecticut.
It was, it was a special day, just a great day to end the trip, and, you know, had a lot of fun up, up here, ate Max's custard like three times while we were up here. It was, it was fantastic. I'd definitely come back to Keighoga.
Yeah, it was, it was an awesome week here. It fished amazing.
And this event.
I mean, this lake is so healthy, and you only get this in the north. I mean, I love to go down south and fish, but you don't get stuff like this.
Everywhere I went, just, this place is just so healthy. Found fish up north, went, went and explored the canals, and just had an awesome frog bite all day. So this place is just absolute magic.
I mean, this is one of the best largemouth fisheries I've ever fished before. I mean, you could probably catch one anything, honestly. You stand up on your kayak, and, I mean, you see them roaming everywhere, like three, four, or five pounders, and it's just, it's crazy.
So that last, that last speaker was the winner, the ultimate winner of the tournament. It was all catch and release, and it was all based on length. And so Jackson was from Fort Wayne, Indiana. So I just wanted to show you the breadth of where people were coming from in our community for this event. It was incredible. It was the first time they had ever been to Keighoga Lake, and they've already made inquiries about trying to come back. So it produced a quite healthy amount of income into our economy. Very proud of that. Our travel and trade PR, this is media that we are, they call it earned media for what we are able to get in, in, in print publications and publications that we could not buy this coverage. The one on the far left is a travel writer named Suchetto Raywall. I took her personally around the community last fall. She's had a number of articles that have already been placed and published. This one happened to have been from Triple A Magazine. We've got ten vacation spots in New York that won't break the bank, low-cost things to do in the Finger Lakes. These are just examples of Seneca County in the media, in the press, and these are direct results of what we work on every day. Altogether, we had six placements hit this year, readership of over a hundred and fifty million and over nine thousand shares on social media. Upcoming initiatives, our video shoots, I talked about those earlier, our fall-winter campaign series, we'll, we're working on those right now, so those will hit later in the year. It's hard to believe, but it's almost New York State Fair time. We will again have a cooperative Seneca County branded kiosk at the fair. It's a great way for our local tourism businesses to get their brochures into the state fair throughout the entire duration. It costs them fifty dollars. We pick up the rest of the charge. And then solar eclipse promotion. I'm going to end and pivot over to solar eclipse, but I just wanted to open it up if anyone had any questions on the TPA report. Is everyone still awake?
Jeff, one question. So I was curious with an event, like what took place in Geneva this weekend with the Muscleman? How do, do we coordinate with that? How do we sort of cross-pollinate or take advantage of that? Those, those, not me that specifically, but those type of events that are beyond the county line?
Yeah, well, so we'll typically work with the other tourism promotion offices, and we'll, we'll share information, we'll share resources, like in the, in the case of the bass fishing one that came here, we gave people ideas from other communities, too, like Skyler County or Keighoga County. Geneva do the same thing, visit Finger Lakes office. We, we work really well together. Yeah, we definitely take, we definitely took advantage of Muscleman. Any other questions? Oh, yes, sir.
I think Miranda Chee is going to say, what?
Well, that, that, that was clearly a designer mistake. No, I'm just kidding. We'll, we'll get that fixed. It's got a Waterloo address, though. How about that? Any other questions? Okay, let me get into solar, because this is what I was asked to come here and talk about, solar eclipse promotion. So I will put on my science teacher hat and just start, for those of you that are not entirely familiar with the solar eclipse. Eclipse basic, a total solar eclipse is when the moon casts a shadow over the sun, totally blocking out the sun. So that's just a little diagram of that. That's what it'll look like to the average person when it is a total eclipse. This map is the map of the country, and you can see the, the line, the lines that are on this map are what is called the Path of Totality. And so all of this happens on Monday, April twenty, April eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Those cities that are in that line are going to see that full eclipse that I showed you. Zooming in a little bit more into where, what that looks like in the state of New York, you can see basically Syracuse to Niagara Falls, well, really Rochester to Buffalo and Niagara Falls are more on the center line, but as far out as us and up into the Adirondacks. This one is really zooming farther into the Finger Lakes area, so you can kind of see where we are, where that D-mark line is in Seneca County, basically the Seneca, the Sampson State Park. If you're south of Sampson State Park, you're probably not going to see much. But if you're north, the farther north you go, the longer that your viewing will last. So this is a chart, this is actually from our webpage on the solar eclipse here in Seneca. It's on Discover Seneca. This is what you can expect. So Junius leads all of our towns with the most viewing of the total eclipse, two minutes and forty-one seconds, goes down to fifty, a little over fifty seconds in Romulus. The partial eclipse for most people will begin around two oh seven. The total eclipse begins around three twenty, three twenty-one, three twenty-two, and the end of the partial, it'll go to about four thirty, four thirty-three. So some of the notables, New York State DOT projects one million additional visitors from Niagara Falls to Syracuse in that corridor. Rochester Museum and Science Center, who really has taken the lead on most of the solar eclipse planning for our area anyways, along with Genesee Transportation Council. But R M S C projects ten thousand visitors for their viewing event. They are actually working on bringing some celebrities into Rochester as well as part of their viewing event. Many schools, and I've reached out to some, some of our superintendents here, many schools either have called the day off or are going to have a half-day. And if you think about it, that time when the total eclipse is happening, a lot of those kids are going to be on buses, so they really don't want them to miss it, right? I get this one asked a lot from our industry folks, what if, what if it's cloudy? So right now, the forecast has a sixty-seven percent chance of cloudiness, but the good news is, even if it is still cloudy, it will still get dark, and it will get very dark. Animals will think it is nighttime. So even if it's cloudy, and we're going to cross our fingers that it's really clear weather, the hardcore enthusiasts, and there are hardcore enthusiasts for solar eclipse, they have been planning for this for years. The last major one was in Oregon. They have been planning for years. We are probably not going to get the hardcore enthusiasts in Seneca County. They're going to Niagara Falls, they're going to Buffalo, they're going to Rochester. But what we will get is those people that really haven't, you know, planned it yet, a lot of the family and friends traveling, we will get them. The goal is to give people activities, and I spoke to Supervisor Partee about this, the goal is to give people activities to do after the event. So I just talked about the event ends at four thirty. As soon as four thirty-three happens, people are in their cars and headed home, right? The throughway is going to be a standstill. The back roads are going to be a standstill. We, our goal has been, what can we give people to do after the event, whether it's going to a restaurant, food and beverage, an eclipse-themed activity. I've already seen in other counties, some of the breweries are doing a thing with light and dark beer for the eclipse and the partial eclipse. I mean, they're getting very creative, but that's the goal. So what have we done to date, and what's some of the upcoming things that we are working on? I'll just start out by telling you what I see as our role at the TPA, and that is to curate, to distinguish Seneca County, develop our brand, our destination brand, to inspire travel, to come here for the event, but also to create economic vitality, repeat visitation in the future. So what have we done? We've launched a website. It's basically acting like a landing page for our digital advertising campaign. This is on Discover Seneca. That's what it looks like, a screenshot. I showed you that chart earlier. We have had several information sessions. Any of you that have been on One Seneca have probably heard about this. We've talked about this in One Seneca. Our Chamber Tourism Committee has been talking about this for over a year. I'm part of our, I'm the chair of our Regional Tourism Council, and we have been definitely talking about it for the better part of a year now. We have secured four really strong placements already on where to see the Path of Totality in, in New York State. This article was from S I Live, and it included Seneca County into it, in terms of those cities in New York State to see the total eclipse. We were in the best twenty twenty-four total solar eclipse viewing spots. These were June and May. So those placements, three million in readership, a hundred and eight social shares. I have talked about this at length with Ted Baker, for any of you that have tuned in. I do a monthly radio show with, on the Finger Lakes Radio News Network. We've had many social media posts and that newsletter. I told you, we send it out on a bi-monthly basis. Some of the other things we're doing, you have to wear sun, safety glasses to experience this. You cannot look at the sun directly like any other time. You have to wear safety glasses. Sunglasses do not work. So a big thing that a lot of the tourism agencies are doing is getting safety glasses in bulk numbers and distributing them in the community. I will say that our priority, that we have sort of kind of come to the conclusion, any tourism-based businesses in Seneca County that actually have viewing offense, they will take precedence in terms of how we give out these safety glasses, and then the community gets what's left. So we are, we are going to make safety glasses for the eclipse available. We are going to continue to have information sharing, providing guidance to our local tourism businesses and public officials. I talked this with Supervisor Partee again. Public safety is really important, that those officials that work in public safety, our roads, our policing departments, our ambulance corps, we want to work with them and keep them abreast of what's happening, when it happens, what needs there might be from it. We are really continuing to provide industry leadership, convene those tourism thought leaders together. We already have done this, but we actually have an event scheduled. This is with Dan Schneiderman. Dan is with the Rochester Museum and Science Center. We haven't, we haven't hosted Dan yet in Seneca County. Excuse me, most of our, our colleague, most of my colleagues have. We have got something set up with Dan on August eighth and at ten o'clock, and Dan's going to come down from the Rochester Museum and Science Center and basically help businesses plan and give them an idea of how to put on a viewing event. Dan is the foremost expert at Rochester Museum and Science Center. And then advertising, it's, it's really about promoting what we have going on, promoting our area. So website is going to take front and take center stage. We already have the, the page up, as I said, but, you know, there's going to be constant work toward it. There's certainly a lot of things that we want to put up there that just aren't there right now, but we are working on it. We're working, we already have our blog post calendar created, so you're going to find things like best viewing spots, how to take eclipse pictures, where to get glasses, the best places to get a post- eclipse meal, and digital advertising. Digital advertising geo-targeted to the east and south, because if you remember the, the map, the people that will not have really any, anything to watch are the people to the east of us and to the south of us. So that's where we're, where we're focusing our, our budget. And I think that's, oh, the next solar eclipse. So if you think this is still not a big deal, the next solar eclipse in the U.S. is twenty forty-five, the next solar eclipse in, in New York State is twenty seventy-nine, and the next solar eclipse in the greater Rochester area is twenty-one forty-four. So this is not a very common occurrence. That is my presentation. I hope that was helpful to give you an idea of what we're doing, but is there any questions that I can answer from you while we still have some daylight? I mean, is that what you were looking for in terms of what we are doing? Okay. We would love to be a part of any, any committees that are formed, any task force that might be created or event that the county might be looking into, please keep this in mind, because we have a lot of, we have a lot of experience in terms of the, the planning work and also the connections, like I said, to the Rochester Museum and Science Center. the connections, like I said, to the Rochester Museum and Science Center. Okay, thank you. And thank you to the county IT staff for giving me some sound today.
Okay, everybody ready? All right, we have a petitioner next. Mr. Andrews Waterloo, if you wanna come up. State your name, please, where you're from. Yeah, five minutes, and then I'll let you know when we get close to the end of that, okay? Thank you.
My name's Detney Andrews, and I ran into a problem the first of May. Andreas, or if I pronounce it right, Andranias ammonia that they put on the fields, that's supposed to be put in during October, late October, and no later than April. Our farmers have been doing some serious unsafe practices. In the month of May, it was put in. In the first two weeks of May, it was eighty degrees out. Now, this has specific instructions. It says you're not supposed to put it, you're supposed to put it in the ground when it's fifty and below. That's why it goes in in winter time, not in the summertime. And that caused some serious issues with me, because, this is for you, if I can sit here and pass it around?
Sure.
That talks about how it's a toxic gas. It's been around since seven, or eighteen seventeen.
Could you pull the mic down a little bit? I think some people are having trouble hearing you. Thank you.
It's been around since eighteen seventeen. It's used for farming. And the big issue, or my experience when it hit me, is that my throat dried up, my eyes were burning, the glands on the side of my ears here swelled up the size of golf balls. And when you look up that on the chart, I was exposed to seven hundred parts per million. Now, you know that the Canada fires and the smoke could just put two fifty to three hundred parts around here, and that's quite dangerous and unhealthy. Well, in Junius, and I've also noticed in other areas of Seneca County, we don't have small fields anymore. We have fields that are two to three miles long. If you look at ninety-six from Waterloo to Romulus, nothing but cornfields. In our area, when the agricultural man, George, looked it up, I'm dead center of cornfields that are two to three miles long. That is based on an eight-hour day. These farmers spray for twelve hours, eight o'clock in the morning to eight at night. This is a constant seven hundred parts per million, which I was exposed to. If you've gone down the road and smelt it, you've been exposed to at least a hundred and higher. Now, when you smell natural gas and you see all the advertisements and you hear about it on the radio, if you see it, you report it, or if you smell it, you report it. That's only fifty parts per million, up to a hundred, and within a half an hour, ten hour, then you get sick and you can die. This happens instantly. It burns. Ammonia draws the moisture out, so it dries your mouth out. It burns your eyes. It sucks every bit that they can. I ended up in the emergency room because I got into my lungs. That is really bad. So I had to call nine one one, and then I ran into some serious issues. When I actually looked this up, and you can look it up yourself, how many people have died in Seneca County because of this? This shows that an average of one person dies a year. And over right now, one thousand six hundred and fifty-one have been injured, including myself, and it's still continuing on and on and on. It hasn't stopped. You can check with the D.C. When I called the first time, a sergeant came down, and his first response was is that Lieutenant Reed ordered him not to do anything. I have his body cam that shows the farmers, which is on the other side of me, is a mile by two miles deep cornfield. He has the tractor, the injector, the ammonia, and a set of discs right behind it. He got sprayed at the same time I did. And that is on here. And I also have a paper for you, so you can obtain all the information that you want, all the videos. You can get these reports. The first officer suggested that I go to the Junius Town Board. So I went down there, and it was a lynching. When I went down and brought, started talking about this, Mr. Brunel can verify, he said that he's had many accidents, and he survived it. But when I started talking about it, he couldn't stop banging his hammer and saying, farmers have the right to farm law. Wouldn't stop. And matter of fact, I got tired of, tired of it. They brought in a gentleman from Cornell, and he even stated, for my defense, that this stuff can be put in at the proper time, and they won't lose any yield. They're looking at three hundred dollars an acre is what they wanna get. And it doesn't make much of a difference. But I had to walk out of there, because this is all I heard, is the farmers have the right to farm, right? Mr. Brunel? I'm sure you were gonna say no, you can ask anybody at the meeting.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. If you'd like to come back to the next meeting, you're more than welcome to and address the board.
The gentleman before me got a half an hour, and I get one minute. This shows that Lieutenant Reed did nothing, and that there were many, many calls that he said that he wasn't gonna do nothing about. That is also on this disc as well. He said that the only law that's important to Seneca County with the farm law is that if you don't like it, you can leave. This is the nine one one calls. There were many calls from many farmers on this. But five minutes isn't gonna explain it all.
Like I said, sir, you're more than welcome to come back to the next meeting, as much as you want and as often as you want. The other people did presentations.
I was supposed to come here. The federal government told me to come here first, and so did the state, because the federal can't do nothing yet, the state can't do nothing yet until you guys do something. I tried to present to you this in five minutes, it ain't gonna work.
Like I said, you're more than welcome to come back.
I know, and it's gonna take longer. So I'll just give them.
Mr. Chairman, may he have the floor a minute.
Well, I just have one piece of paper for you.
Sure, Supervisor Brunel.
One piece of paper for you.
If you'd like to pass that stuff out for us, but your time is up, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, I won't speak anymore. I just wanna give you this one paper.
Thank you.
This is an Internal Affairs on Lieutenant Pete, or Lieutenant Reed, for not doing what you're signing right there that says, for the people, this wasn't for the people.
Thank you.
Just so the board knows, they were at our town hall. So is Farm Bureau and all the rest of the farm organizations. What the farmers are doing, they've explained to them, they're doing it correct. We cannot, the farmers can't put antihyrus in in the fall, it doesn't work. We got farmers here in this room that know the same. So he's been through this all the time. He's complaining of everything that goes on. Just a minute, sir.
Use in the winter time, in the winter time only.
Sir, your, your time is up. If you'd like to have a seat, please.
One of his questions?
No, this is not a Q and A. Your time is up. He has the floor. You could please sit down. You'll have to come back next month if you'd like to talk.
I can get a recording of this, because I know what he's saying right now is.
It, it's on YouTube, so you're more than welcome.
I watch, so, all right. I know that it is a lie.
Thank you. Supervisor Brunel, you wanna finish, please? Push your mic there.
Through this, already, he's unsatisfied with what, the police don't do anything, the D.C. doesn't do anything, and this and that. So the last I knew, we talked to the co-op here, Seneca County Co-op, and told them he's gonna call the FBI. So it's been through, and it should be over with. Farmers are all in their right, and doing everything properly by all organizations in the farm organization. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay.
Section three oh eight of the same law says no. Unsafe acts are against the law.
All right, next up on our agenda is open privilege of the floor for anybody that hasn't spoke from the public that would like to speak. Okay, moving on. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes? First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Reports of special committees. Supervisor Cromwether, I know you had something you'd like to talk about. Don't forget to push, push your mic.
I just wanted to mention that wheat harvesting is going on on Kuga Lake as planned, taking truckloads of nutrients out of the north end of the lake that's gotta help. And I touched on this at the committee meeting. I'm excited about the project. Jeff Trout has talked about putting sewer line on the, on the shoreline from Varick and tying it into Lower Lake Road there. And this is on the other side of the lake I touched on last meeting. They call it Kuga Lake Protection Project. But they're putting two hundred and seventy-five grinder pump stations installed, eight point nine miles of underground sewage force main installed, two large intermediate pump stations installed, and the Aurora wastewater treatment plant upgrades, a new treatment tank, upgraded pumps, blowers, and electrical systems. The goal would be to put a sewer line all the way around all these lakes, would help mitigate the harmful algae blooms. I was at a meeting last night about the quagga mussels and zebra mussels, their impact on the harmful algae blooms. And it's pretty interesting. It's, we're gonna have to upgrade our water intake plants, because there's no easy answer on eliminating the harmful bacterias in our drinking water. Hauling the nutrients out, truckload at a time's a start. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any special committees like, Supervisor Partee?
Yeah, I'll be calling a special meeting for the broadband committee in a couple weeks. The design phase with New York Engineering Services is almost done. I spoke to him this week. He's got some outstanding questions. I talked to Dave yesterday briefly when I saw him down at the Willard meeting we had and Ernie. So we're gonna schedule a meeting, and he will be ready to present to the board. Unfortunately, he has a conflict with our board meeting in August. So either we want him to come to the committee meetings, if not, it'll have to be the September board meeting, which at the moment he's blocked off, but he cannot make the August, whatever the date was. So we can figure that out. Okay?
Thank you. Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Just to back up Supervisor Cromwether, I wanted to remind folks that Soil and Water is sponsoring another soil health workshop this Thursday at ten o'clock at, in Seneca Falls at the Lot Farm. And all the supervisors are invited.
Thank you. Anybody else? I just have to look at Supervisor Hayes did not make it here tonight, but he wanted me to remind everybody of the special water and sewer meeting that they'll be having on the eighteenth at six P.M. in the boardroom here. So, anybody else? Good? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Chairman's remarks. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that came out last night that made it to the Willard meeting. Had a really good turnout, you know, a lot of people putting notes on the sticky board there. It was interesting, a lot of people in attendance. Thank you to all, everybody that came from the board here. Next thing is on special committees. If you haven't met yet since the special committees were established, if you guys would try to meet, you know, make sure, just at least get together and make sure everything's, if there's anything that can be moved along, let's do it. I think there's some that haven't met yet, but if we can just fire that up a little more, that would be appreciated. That's all I have. County manager?
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few things wanted to report to the board and to the community that we are into our second week at the department level on the 2024 Seneca County budget. It went live on Friday, June the thirtieth. Departments have until Friday, September the first, at which time we'll roll. Kyle and Haley and I and others will work to try to get it all put together with the ideal timeline of sometime in mid-October to file a tentative budget with the Board of Supervisors. Number two, this past Saturday, there were two ceremonies introducing the third and fourth of five new historic markers here in Seneca County. Ten A.M. there was an event at the Oak Hill Cemetery in Varick, and at one P.M., unveiling of historic marker in front of Baby Bear in the Village of Ovid. There's one more to go later this year down in Lodi Point. Thank you to Roy and his team for all the work that they've done, supporting the installs and all of the restoration work that's been done. Last update I have is that work continues on the elevator and related accessibility improvements at Papa Bear, at the Three Bears. We remain optimistic that the project will be completed in time for the board's annual meeting at the Three Bears in October. So, thank you.
Thank you. County attorney?
I have nothing further to report at this time.
Thank you. Communications?
Communications fifty-five through sixty-one have been received and filed.
Thank you. Okay. First up, Supervisor Borst, number fourteen.
County manager authorized and directed to sign a contract with Elizabeth P. Miller to provide speech-language services for the preschool program.
Support.
Second. First and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number fifteen, Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Division of Human Services, the contract with Berkshire Farm Center and Services for Youth Incorporated for child welfare-related preventative services.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number sixteen, Supervisor Borst.
Board of Supervisors, to approve Seneca County Division of Human Services contractual agreement with Kuga Centers for Youth and Family Resource Center, Respite Services.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number seventeen, Supervisor Borst.
Twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three Workforce Development Youth Bureau Board's Brightest Star Recognition.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number eighteen, Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Division of Human Services, the contract with Children-Awaiting Parents, Donald J. Corbett Adoption Agency for Foster Care Recruitment and Home Finding Services.
Support.
Lots of support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number nineteen, Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors, to approve the 2023-2024 Supervision and Treatment Services for Juvenile's Program, S.T.S.J.P. Plan, and Chairman of the Board of Supervisors approves the electronic submission of the S.T.S.J.P. Plan based on county attorney review and approval.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number twenty, Supervisor Borst.
Seneca County Health Department to purchase one 2024 Ford Edge SE all-wheel drive.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Number twenty-one, Supervisor Don Trout.
Request for proposal for boil-
Request for proposal for boiler replacement at Senate County Law Enforcement Center.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 22 Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Board of Supervisors authorizes changes to Seneca County policy to permit use of approved therapy dogs on county property.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 23 Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one full-time confidential secretary to the sheriff's office.
Support.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 24 Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Board of Supervisors approves the creation and filling of one full-time cleaner position at the law enforcement department.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 25 Supervisor Borst.
Resolution introducing local law six of the year 2023, a local law creating the water use law for Seneca County Water District Number One.
Second. A second.
Just like to thank Attorney Etman and County Manager Mitch Rowe for helping us put this together finally. Thank you.
Do you have something Supervisor Heisen or no? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 25. Oh, same one. Let me keep moving here. Did not save a tree on that one. Yeah. Okay. Public Safety, number 26 Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors authorizes contract with Tetra Tech Incorporated for hazardous mitigation planning.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 27 Supervisor Reinhardt.
Board of Supervisors supports renewal of agreement with South Seneca School District for Second School Resource Officer through 2024-2025 school year.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 28 Supervisor Partee.
Seneca County Tourism Promotion and Development Grant Funds approved for the 2023 funding to Interlake and Fire Department.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 30 Supervisor Reynolds.
Chairman Enzil, Seneca County Tourism Promotion Development Grant Funds approval for revitalization of Waterloo Committee.
Support.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious, why is it two different? Isn't it?
It's my mistake. It should be Supervisor Partee.
Hang on a second, I'm sorry Supervisor Reynolds. Supervisor Partee, I'm being told this should be yours? Okay, sorry. Will you run with that?
Seneca County Tourism Promotion and Development Grant Funds approved for the revitalization of Waterloo Committee.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Now Supervisor Reynolds.
Are you sure now?
I'm, I, I'm sure. Let's go.
Board of Supervisors authorize amendments to the 2023 Seneca County Budget.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 31 Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisors support allocation of American Recovery Act funding to the village of Ovid for water infrastructure.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 32 Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisors, Supervisors support allocation of American Recovery Act funding for Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation District for the purchase of vehicles and equipment.
Support.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 33 Supervisor Reynolds.
Okay. Board of Supervisors supports the sharing of sales tax revenue with Seneca County, in Seneca County, I'm sorry.
Second. Discussion? Supervisor Shipley.
Thank you. Supervisors, regarding this sales tax sharing proposal, as it is currently structured, I cannot support this proposal and will vote against it because this measure will cause historic property tax increase for Seneca County. I would be open to any amendments that would eliminate a property tax increase for this worthy cause.
Thank you. Next person? Supervisor Cronewether.
I can't support this, even though Seneca Falls could definitely use the money to upgrade their water treatment plants, but most economists say there's a recession on the horizon and our Department of Health and Human Services says Medicaid's going to cost us another million dollars a year. And I think this is just a feel-good proposal anyways because I don't think there's going to be any extra. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Supervisor Heisen?
Yes, I can't support this either, but I could support calling it a one-year pilot program for sales tax sharing. Just do it for one year and see how it works out. And also only put a million dollars in to it instead of the $3 million. So I'd like to make that amendment to the resolution.
Got a first and a second on the amendment. Discussion anymore? Supervisor Jeff Trout?
I oppose the amendment. I also, and I would like to say that I think there's been some amazing, high-quality conversation about the pros and cons of this proposal. In fact, I think in our last meeting Supervisor Farrar made some very thoughtful comments that actually made me go back and rethink some things. However, I think the way it's properly, I think the way that it's been proposed, it feels as if that the county is well-protected. And I don't see also why we couldn't in the future also change it if we needed to make those changes. I respect the fact that folks are looking out for the county finances. I, I just don't see if in fact the, as Supervisor Cronewether brought up, if in fact we are getting into a time where the amount of sales tax may not be as high as it currently is or doesn't continue to grow, maybe we won't share, right? But I think the way this is set up, it protects the county and it's only the access. In addition, I'd like to make clear there's been some behind-the-scenes supposition that somehow supporting this proposal would somehow be an insult to the county manager or the finance department. And I want to say absolutely unequivocally that I support this proposal, and it has absolutely nothing to do with my respect for any of those parties. In fact, I would say publicly that in fact my, the success I've had in this position so far has been dependent upon the support of County Manager Rowe and the employees within this organization. And I, I respect that entirely. And that my support for this has nothing to do with their positions on this issue or any other issue. I think it's a good idea and it's something that we at the towns can take this money and use for infrastructure improvement. You've actually heard from Supervisor Cronewether how important sewer and water are. I can guarantee you that if this passes, that the Town of Fayette will put this money towards infrastructure. And that infrastructure, including the infrastructure that supports, as we saw here earlier today with the presentation by the chamber for the short-term rentals, which is one of those bright spots, that infrastructure will further support the establishment and the promotion and the growth of those short-term rentals, which obviously from the presentation are a key to our sales tax and room tax growth. Thank you.
Supervisor Borst.
I just want to say I'm a little confused by the amendment because the $3 million isn't in the original proposal, I don't believe. There was really no set amount, it was just a 10%. So the $3 million, the change of $3 million proposal to $1 million is confusing me a little bit.
Supervisor Heisen?
I don't think it's confusing. It's just it will be $1 million at the start of the year, next year, to be divvied up with the different towns and villages.
I understood that part, but you said $3 million, but $3 million figure is not in the proposal.
I say $1 million instead of $3 million.
Said $1 million instead of sharing $3 million.
Anybody else? Any discussion on this? Take a vote on the amendment? Do a roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds? This is for the amendment. Supervisor Jeffrey Trout? Supervisor Brownell? Supervisor Barnhart? Supervisor Borst?
No.
Supervisor Hayes' absent. Supervisor Farrar?
No.
Supervisor Cronewether? Supervisor Reinhardt?
We're voting on the amendment, correct?
Correct.
No.
Supervisor Partee?
No.
Supervisor Heisen? Supervisor Don Trout?
No.
Supervisor Enzil?
No.
Supervisor Shipley?
Since I second the motion, I'll vote yes.
146 ayes, 554 nays, 100, I'm sorry, 50 absent.
Okay, so that's defeated. Any discussion on the original resolution? Are we ready to vote? All right. Roll call, please, on the vote for as it stands. No, you're all right.
Supervisor Reynolds? Supervisor Jeffrey Trout? Supervisor Brownell? Supervisor Barnhart? Supervisor Borst?
Yes.
Supervisor Hayes, absent. Supervisor Farrar?
No.
Supervisor Cronewether? Supervisor Reinhardt?
Yes.
Supervisor Partee?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisen? Supervisor Don Trout?
Yes.
Supervisor Enzil?
Yes.
Supervisor Shipley?
No.
414 ayes, 286 nays, 50 absent. You need 376 for it to pass, so it passes.
Motion passes. Any unfinished business before we go to new business?
It's, one question on the past resolution is who's going to administer it? Anybody figured that out yet? Who's going to administer this?
Can you elaborate? What do you mean?
Who's going to determine and how are the towns going to get their money? And when will they get their money? And who determines how much money goes to Lodi versus Ovid versus, so that's the administration of the, of the money.
The resolution calls, the resolution calls for it to be shared on equalized value, which is determined by the real.
Yeah, but who, who at the county is going to do that? Would that be, that be the chairman of the board? Would that be the finance department? Would that be? That's what I'm asking.
The last resolved clause directs the county manager and the county attorney to drop the documents to do that in the most efficient administrative manner.
Would this money be available for, won't be available in 2023, it'll be available for budget year 2024?
I think when we discussed this, a committee, Attorney Etman implied that the first payout would be in 2025, but again, I would wait for the county manager and the county attorney to hash that out.
Thank you. Any more unfinished business? Okay, new business. Supervisor Don Trout, Rule 29?
Like to enact Rule 29 for any resolutions and motions that would fall underneath such rule.
A second.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Supervisor Jeff Trout, take care of number one for me? Not the, the, on new business. No, it's okay. Page 35, number one there. Under new business.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors proclamation in recognition of the centennial birthday celebration of Mr. Walter Harford.
Support.
A second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Unanimous. Okay. Issue number two. Supervisor Reynolds?
Supervisors support allocation of American Recovery Rescue Act and airport operations funds and award contracts to construct conventional hangar project at the Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue number three.
I think that's me too.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisors authorize additional ARPA funds to authorize purchase of a trailer for aquatic plant harvesting operations.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now Supervisor Jeff Trout. Would you help me, please?
Pursuant to Section 105, 1F of the New York State Open Meetings Law, I move to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person's or corporation's and invite the following.
Pause. Supervisor, I'm sorry. Supervisor Borst, you had something else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. So in the ARPA committee, we discussed the cupola on the Three Bears. County Manager Rowe said that there's another round of CFA grant funding that possibly could be available for it and that it was time-sensitive so he can get the proper paperwork done. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the county manager to apply for CFA grant funding for repairs to the Three Bears Papa Bear Cupola.
Second. Support on that. Any discussion?